One more check here, can you hear me, TTHM staff? Check, one, two, three, four, thank you so much, all right, folks, we are dialing and we are live. Welcome to this live telephone Town Hall meeting. We are broadcasting live from Historic Fair Park at Briscoe Carpenter Livestock Center for City Hall at Fair Park. We have both in-person and TTHM participants joining us, so thank you to those of you who are joining us via TeleTown Hall. Right now, we are dialing out to over 104,000 Dallas residents. We'll be wrapping that up in a few minutes here. In the meantime, hang tight with us and I'll tell you how you can participate in today's live forum. Again, we have both in-person and telephone Town Hall meeting participants joining us. We're here today to hear what residents' budget priorities are for the upcoming fiscal year 2024-25 budget. This forum also provides an opportunity to speak and ask questions to city leaders and department staff representatives. We will be reading questions from the live TeleTown Hall audience and asking city leadership and staff to provide answers. Today, we have city representatives joining us from in-person at Historic Fair Park, as well as through WebEx and over the phone through the TeleTown Hall. If you already have a question about the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 city budget, all you have to do is press zero now to get that question to an operator. They'll take down some notes on your question. I'll be reading some of your questions and asking city representatives and staff to answer those questions during our one-hour live forum. We will be reading questions again and having them answered, so if you already have a question, press zero. Our city leaders here include Chief Financial Officer Jack Ireland, Budget and Management Services Director Jeanette Whedon, and we have Councilmember Bezal Dua and Councilmember Blackman on as well. Department representatives from the following are also available to answer questions. 311, Dallas Fire Rescue, the Dallas Police Department, Public Works, and Sanitation Services. If you have any questions for any of these leaders or department representatives, again, press zero. And as you listen to our overview of the proposed budget, think about any questions you'd like to submit for Q and A. Once we get everyone up to speed, we will be taking those live questions from you folks in our listening audience, so if you have a question to submit for Q and A now or at any time during this forum, press zero to submit that question to an operator. You will have the opportunity to ask your question live over the air, but if you're not comfortable going live, you should still submit your question by pressing zero. Then let your operator know that you'd like to have the moderator read your question. And as I'm reading this, I'm realizing, we've got a little bit of an audio echo here, I'm just gonna read all the questions, it's gonna make it way easier for everybody here to understand. Again, thanks for joining us, the City of Dallas staff would like to answer your questions again about the proposed city budget. We'd also like to keep you updated electronically moving forward. If you want to get occasional email updates from the city, press seven on your phone to give one of our operators your email address, so again, press zero to submit a question for Q and A. You'll press seven to give that email address to us and we'll get you updates from the city on the budget as we move forward. We have Dallas staff on the line and in-person to help answer questions along with your council members, so don't be shy. If you have a question about any aspect of the planned budget, press zero, get it to an operator. And we will start with an overview of the budget, but we'll spend most of this one-hour forum answering questions from our live listening audience. Right now, we're getting finished dialing out to, again, 104,455 households around the city of Dallas, and we welcome your feedback and questions on the proposed city budget. Some questions you might have are maybe about property taxes, water, sanitation, stormwater, public safety, transportation, city infrastructure, or about the budget process itself. Again, press zero to submit a question or comment for Q and A, press seven to get email updates from the city budget. But first, let's make sure everybody is informed about the planned budget. After that, we're gonna start running some survey questions, you'll be able to give us your feedback just by voting in our surveys, vote in those polls and give us your feedback that way. Even if you're not planning on submitting a question or asking a question today, we'd love to get your feedback on those surveys. So hang tight for that. To get us started, it's my pleasure to welcome Jeanette Whedon, Director of Budget and Management Services, to review the proposed budget before we jump into Q and A and polling. Jeanette, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. As mentioned, my name is Jeanette Whedon, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of Budget and Management Services, and I have the honor of standing here with our Councilmember Willis from District 13. Do you want to say a few words? Okay, great. We are currently in our fiscal year 24 budget, which began on October 1. The City of Dallas develops a biannual budget. Each year, we propose investments for the current year, as well as planned investments for the subsequent year. During our last city council adopted budget session for fiscal year 24, the adopted budget for the current year is 4.62 billion, and that includes the general fund, our enterprise funds, and our capital funds. The fiscal year 24-25 plan budget, which is the budget that we're currently working on, told us 4.55 billion. We have already begun updating our revenue forecast and working with various city departments that you see here at Fair Park. We are updating their budget requests, and we are preparing the city manager's recommended budget for next fiscal year that will be presented to city council on August the 13th. Resident feedback and engagement is a very important part of our budget development process. It helps us set our priorities for developing the budget. And so I want to thank everyone for attending City Hall at Fair Park. I would encourage you all to participate in our budget survey, so there's a QR code for those that are in-person. For those online, I encourage you to visit dallas.gov where you can access our financial transparency page. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the moderator to begin our Q and A session.
Thank you so much, appreciate you being with us here again. Now, we've got some questions that were submitted in advance of this forum as conversation starters, so we can start there. I know we've got city staff here, as well as some additional city representatives and staff members joining via WebEx, so I'm gonna go ahead and go to our first pre-submitted questions, although, thank you, I am seeing questions coming into us from the TeleTown Hall audience, and we'll take as many of those as we can in the time that we have as well. Now, the first question, and Jeanette, maybe you can be the one that takes this on, is what type of revenue is used to pay for the budget?
So, the general fund budget is the budget that gets the most attention, and so for our general fund budget, property tax is our single largest source of revenue. It's about 58% of total revenue for the general fund. One of the things that it's important for residents to remember that the City of Dallas portion of the property tax is only around 30%. The remainder of your property tax goes to the school district, the county, the hospital district, as well as community colleges. And I also like to remind people that your tax bill is determined by three things: the value that's set by the appraisal districts, the exemptions that have been approved by your city council, and the tax rate that's approved by your city council. Our second-largest source of revenue in the general fund is sales tax. In Dallas, residents pay 8.25%. 6.25% of that goes to the state, 1% goes to DART, and 1% comes back to the City of Dallas.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate that answer, and we've got, do we have somebody here representing the Dallas Police Department? Somebody who can speak to fire and safety? All right. Let's go ahead and take, we'll hold that question for a moment here, and I'll move on to our next question for you, Jeanette. How can residents engage and continue to provide feedback on this budget process?
So, as I mentioned, resident input is important, your participation here today is important. We encourage you to continue to engage with us at our Town Hall meetings. We do have a budget priority survey that's available online. We also have partnered with our Dallas Public Library, as well as our Dallas Recreation Centers, so for those of you that visit those locations, you can pick up a paper copy of that survey, or you can scan the QR code. So, lastly, our public hearings. So, we have budget public hearings that we hold. We just had a public hearing on March the 27th. You can engage with us again on May 22nd or August the 28th.
All right, thank you again, appreciate that, Jeanette. Let's go to our next question. What comes next in the budget development process?
So, on August the 13th, we will present the city manager's recommended budget to city council. After the city manager's budget is presented to city council from August 15th through August 29th, your city council members will host budget Town Hall meetings, and so that's your opportunity to engage with us after the city manager's recommendation. As I mentioned previously, we also have an August 28th public hearing where you can provide feedback on the city manager's recommended budget prior to adoption in September.
All right, let's get our first question in from our live TeleTown Hall audience. I'm gonna give Sheri a chance to ask live, we're gonna see how she sounds in here, if she doesn't sound great, I'm gonna read her question. Sheri from Castleview, welcome to the call, go ahead and ask your question, please.
What is the city's priority for improving our roads, our streets? They're in horrible shape.
Got it. So Sheri in Castleview again asking, what is the priority for improving the roads in Dallas? Who can we have that'll take on this question?
Good afternoon, everyone, Aliguthefi, Director of Public Works. Thank you for the question. We do have a paving model that basically let us know what kind of project or what type of roadways we need to select for, you know, maintenance work or our general fund. We do also have the bond fund that the selection criteria is a little bit different, it has a technical criteria along with some other factors that takes into the place. When we, every year, we collect the data from the street to assess all the conditions, and we call it pavement condition index, and based on that, we rank all the streets based on their condition. And again, for bond purposes, there are some other factors for maintenance or general fund portion that we're talking today. We do take the pavement condition index as a part of the factor that we select the streets. I hope this has answered the question, if there is more question, I would be happy to answer.
I'd like to jump in too, this is Councilmember Willis from District 13. So, Mr. Hutelfi, who's Director of Public Works, brought up the bond program, there's an election coming up on May 4th, early voting starts April 22nd, and the allocation to streets is $521 million, that includes transportation, like traffic lights, and includes sidewalks and some bridges and alleys as well. So, that is a program that comes up about every four or five years, and so that's separate from the general fund. Last year's transportation and streets budget, I believe, was about $150 million. Dallas has billions of dollars in street needs, and so, you know, it's difficult to get at catching up on all of the need that the city has. However, streets are an area I know I'm very passionate about, I know there are other council members who are very passionate about that as well. I've heard that asphalt costs have gone up like, something like 60%. So, we're keeping this number at a level that I don't think is accomplishing as much, given how much the materials have increased and how much labor costs have increased, and so that is a number that in this coming budget, I would like to see us increase, because I think that's one of our core commitments to people who live in this city, is having roads that are navigable, that don't hurt your automobile or your tires, and I think that's part of the day-to-day life, that is part of quality of life for our citizens. And so, I can tell you, I'm at least one person who's gonna be fighting to see that number come up.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis, and I'll jump in just to piggyback on the current discussion. So, in the current budget, we have allocated $151.7 million just for public works types of projects, and so we're forecasting that we're going to improve and maintain approximately 792 lane miles. So, in response to that question, I think there is a commitment in the current budget, as well as the planned budget, to fund street maintenance.
Perfect, thank you so much, appreciate the answers, and thanks again for all the questions that we've got coming from us from our live TeleTown Hall audience. We're gonna run our first survey question here, and those of you in our live TeleTown Hall audience can vote on these polls just by using your phone, then we'll jump right back into Q and A. First polling question for you is this: Which of these strategic priorities is most important to you? Press one for economic development, for example, supporting the city's business climate and broadening the tax base. Press two for environment and sustainability, for example, programs to ensure clean air, drinking water, environmental justice. Press three for government performance and financial management, for example, managing the budget and city contracts to be a fiscally responsible city. And press four for housing and homelessness solutions, for example, rental assistance and services for the homeless. I'm gonna read through your options again here, go ahead and vote whenever you're ready, folks. Which of these strategic priorities is the most important to you? Press one for economic development, two for environment and sustainability, three for government performance and financial management, and four for housing and homelessness solutions. And thanks again to those of you who are joining us on the phone, we've had over 8,300 total attendees join us on the phone, and we're also broadcasting in Spanish today, so thanks to those of you who are joining us on our Spanish simulcast. We're gonna jump back into Q and A here, and, let's see, let's go to... We have a lot more questions on roads, if we want to take on any of those questions. And maybe we can take this one, I'm not sure who we can have that can speak to it, but Jeanette, maybe you can take this from Sherilyn. So, she's asking from, what percentage of the budget is put aside for homeless? I'm hearing about other budgets, but the homeless situation is bad in Dallas County, what consideration is there for them? Can you speak to the portion of the budget that goes specifically to homelessness?
Yes, I can. So, for the current year's budget for the Office of Homeless Solutions, the City of Dallas has set aside $17.8 million. I do want to mention that we are part of a continuum of care, and so, the Dallas Real-Time Rapid Rehousing Initiative, it's a team of homeless service providers, and that's co-led by the Office of Homeless Solutions, as well as Housing Forward, which is our lead agency for the continuum of care. This coalition was formed in October of 2021. The initiative is designed to combine rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing subsidies and case management, so the goal is to house as many of our unhoused as possible. Through additional funding that we've received recently from the federal government, this real-time rehousing initiative has a goal of housing 6,000 unique individuals by 2025.
Thank you so much, appreciate that answer as well, and...
I'm happy to add something about what this complex issue takes to handle. You know, this is a very human, complex issue that we have to struggle with and that cities across the country are struggling with. And so, we have our continuum of care, Housing Forward, that is receiving federal dollars to help house people. But some of the things the city funded last year that I think are successful, that I'd want to see continue, is around, we hired 16 new outreach workers, we provided the funding, and Housing Forward has undertaken the hiring of those teams, because it takes working with people one-on-one to help move them into getting the services they may need, health services, it may be legal, it may be education, housing, whatever it may be. Some other things that we have stood up in the past to continue funding because they have been shown to be successful are things like the HART team, the Homeless Action Response Team, that is a group that can be dispatched to an encampment or in a more acute situation to go out and work one-on-one with people, as well as the RITE Cares Team, and that stands for Rapid Integrated Healthcare Team. And sometimes people think this is a DPD issue, and that you call the police if you're seeing a homeless person or if you're seeing someone in distress, and the reality is, that's not necessarily the job of our police department. What that person may need is a medic and a counselor, and so the RITE Cares Team is something that can also be used by the city, if someone is to call 911 and say, "I see someone in distress," that's not necessarily the police to just go and handle, they need the support for them to give that person the support. It could be medical, they may just be off their medicine, or they may be in some other kind of distress where they need medical care, not to go to jail. And so, these are teams that were piloted a few years ago, and each year, they have grown because they've helped keep people out of emergency rooms and/or in jail, and getting them the care they need to stand them back up to a better life. So, those are some of the things I think that we would want to see in the budget continuing that are also around homelessness.
Thank you so much for adding, again, that was Councilmember Willis, representing you in Dallas, Council District 13. We're gonna go on to a question here, I believe we have a representative from DPD potentially take this one on from Chuck, we'll see if we can get Chuck live. Hey Chuck, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, my question was, police. And every time I talk to a police officer, they'll tell me we're down 800 to 1,000 officers. And when I look at crime statistics in Dallas, I don't think they're improving, and so, to me, everything else falls in line if you get the police force back up to where it should be. And I've heard a lot of rationalizations without, well, not a lot, but, I mean, Steve Garcia talked about different forms of policing and doing this and that, and that's good, there's nothing like boots on the ground. So that's my main deal, that's, you know, how do you feel safe in your city?
Got it, thank you for your question, appreciate you Chuck. Who do we, do we have somebody here from DPD? And we've got a mic for you right down here, if you want to grab that. And while we're doing this, if anybody has questions in-person audience here, if you think of a question you'd like to ask live, just raise your hand, we're gonna get through some more audience questions, some more polling questions, but just flag me down, we'll grab a mic and get it out to you to ask your question as well. All right, and so again, Chuck's question, police force strength, if you want to take that on, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Sergeant Kelly Colton Becker, I'm with the Office of Community Affairs.
Can you push the button, live on that? Okay, all right.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Sergeant Kelly Colton Becker, I'm with the Office of Community Affairs. I can't speak to all the specifics or the details on numbers of retention or recruitment efforts, because I'm not in that specific office. I can tell you that, yes, it has been public that nationally, policing in general, we do need to get more numbers up, and that does affect the Dallas Police Department as well. Our recruiting efforts, we are out there every day, I encourage you to follow us on social media and to see the recruitment efforts that our recruiters are doing every single day, including at this event that is hosted here. They had a table for quite some time. So, in terms of looking at statistics, if you look at DallasPolice.net, we do provide a dashboard for all current accumulated crime over the last five years, so you can actually look at the specifics, and it does show you a map as what those crimes are occurring.
I can add to that, with the numbers that came out Friday afternoon, we get, council members get a weekly report, and that overall crime in Dallas is down 5.9% across crimes against society, crimes against property, and crimes against persons. So while we know that there are certainly areas to improve, public safety is never anything that you take your foot off the gas on, Dallas is actually seeing improvement in this area. But we do know we need to retain and recruit officers, so one of the initiatives, and I would say that Chief Garcia and his team have been very innovative and creative in finding programs to help recruit officers, which is, as was referenced, a national issue. It's hard work to be a police officer, and you have 10 months of training, and that's if you go through all of the criteria to even qualify, and then you have 18 months in the field, I think, to become an officer, a year, 24 months in the field, so it's quite a commitment, and so it's not for everybody. And our officers, we don't compromise on standards, and so what you see in DPD are really some fine people who protect us every day. However, the, some of the initiatives around recruitment are to make every officer a recruiter and offer some bonuses if they can recruit and get people to want to enlist and go through and complete at certain milestones where they get rewarded for that. On the retention end, we've got officers who have served for 28 years, who are eligible to, if they add another two years of service, they are paid a bonus as well. Some other things are just, it comes down to not only pay, but sometimes it's benefits, and exploring childcare and mental health benefits, you know, that you can, there's just greater access to services in some of these categories that we know will stand them up and help give them the support that they need for the very tough job that they do. But we listen to the associations on which markets they'd like to see surveyed for pay rates, and Dallas is very competitive on pay as well, and so there are a number of things. I think there's really no stone left unturned, however, if others have ideas of seeing something that's been successful in other markets, I think we definitely want to hear that. But I can tell you, as someone who watches this on public safety every single month, there's a, there's a lot of innovation going on to help us move those numbers back up.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you Sergeant, appreciate you jumping in with us here. And we're gonna go to our next survey question, and we've got a question coming from Jason in Cedar Oaks. Next survey question for you is this: What of these strategic priorities is most important to you? Again, what of these strategic priorities is most important to you? You can press one for public safety, for example, police and fire services. You can press two for quality of life, arts and culture, for example, parks, libraries, code enforcement, animal services, and cultural... For example, parks, libraries, code enforcement, animal services, and cultural programs. You can press three for transportation and infrastructure. For example, street repairs, drinking water, sidewalks, and bike lanes. You can press four for workforce, education, and equity. For example, programs to advance equity throughout the city and programs to support workforce development. Again, what strategic priority is most important to you? Press one for public safety. Two for quality of life, arts, and culture. Three for transportation and infrastructure. And four for workforce education and equity. Appreciate those votes once again. Let's get our next live audience question in here. And this one is coming to us from Jason. Jason, thanks for waiting. What's your question?
Yes, I had a question about what I needed to do in order to petition for a alleyway to be paved.
Got it. Thank you, Jason. I think we have Ali from Public Works again here.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. City used to have a process as street or alley petition. That process has been revoked and doesn't actually exist anymore. However, the best way to let us know about the condition of the alleys or the streets is through 311 or a service request. You create a service request. We go there, we inspect them. If the routine maintenance can actually address those concerns, we're going to do it. If not, we're going to place it on the needs inventory list, which is the list for future funding consideration. Most of the alleys that we have, they need a reconstruction. And reconstruction is currently only can be funded through the bond program. And the routine maintenance doesn't really work with that. We also have two small programs. One is called the Unimproved Alley Program that if their alley is unimproved, it doesn't have any surface or anything like that, we go there and place some flex space and some asphalt on the top. Again, the budget for that is not that much. And also, we have the Improved Alley Program, which we do repair some of the alleys up to 25%. And again, these two projects, these two programs are pretty small in size. But again, majority of the alley repairs should go through the needs inventory list and the bond program.
And I believe we have 311 here as well. Do we have Stephen Walker here who can speak to this as well?
Thank you again for the question. This is Stephen Walker with 311. I just wanted to add to that there are multiple ways to contact 311. You may simply dial the 311 phone number. If you're on the outskirts of the city and you're on a cell phone, you may have to use our 10-digit number because you may be bouncing off of a cell tower that's outside the city limits. And so that 10-digit number is 214-670-3111. But again, most of the time, you should just be able to simply dial our three-digit number, 311. We do have higher call volumes. And so we, for simple issues, we ask that you use the city web portal off of DallasCityHall.com or Dallas.gov. And also use our 311 Dallas mobile app. And if you use things, you'll be able to get real-time updates by using your email or text messages. So we suggest that so that you can stay on track of whatever the progress is on your requests. Thank you.
So we're giving us their email address for updates. We finally cleared that queue. If you're in our phone audience and you want to give us your email address to get updates on the proposed budget as we move forward through this process, remember, you can press seven on your phone to get with an operator. Give them your best email. We're going to do another polling question in a moment here. But Jimmy has asked me to read this question for him. Let me bring this in. He says, "I understand other large cities have technology that shows where random gun shootings come from. I live in the 75216 district and random gunfire goes off often. And I'm afraid to call the police as the police may be concerned about the people that called them. What are we doing to resolve this?" Sergeant or anybody else here able to take on this question from Jimmy?
Hi, this is Sergeant Colton Becker again. I am not a patrol supervisor. So I urge you to contact your local patrol station in the district in which you're at and contact a supervisor to get clarification. We do encourage anybody to call or report on doors online, any concerns that you guys have or any reports that you need to be making. We are very interested in knowing what is going on in the communities, whether it be random gunfire or violent acts of crime or property crime. So please, we do encourage you to do call. And if you have any questions about the specific response times or details about that, please contact your patrol division that is closest to where you are living.
Thank you, Sergeant. I think we have Ali on WebEx who wants to follow up on this as well.
I apologize. Can you repeat the question for me? This is Ali.
You're looking for the question again? Yeah, so Jimmy says, "I understand other large cities have technology that shows where random gun shootings are coming from." Is that something that Dallas is working on?
Well, I'm sorry. I need to defer that to another department. This is Ali with Public Works.
Right. What I was going to add is that there's been discussion around random gunfire and gunfire detection and how it works. Because as you would expect, it's difficult to determine where the sound may go. I mean, we have echo. We have, I mean, it could be the geography. It could be if there's something downtown and you have tall buildings, it's hard to detect. So while there is technology, according to what DPD has shared with us, and is that it's not always reliable. But what is reliable is if you're in your neighborhood and you are hearing something, please do call. Call 911. Because if neighbors are calling about that, it helps DPD, when they are responding, triangulate and begin to tell, okay, someone on this block has reported it. And now we're getting a report from this block. And so it does assist them by having neighbors go on and make that call. That's what they are asking for, these kinds of calls, to help them locate whoever is doing this sort of thing. So please, please do. Don't worry that you're troubling someone or that it's too much. You know, they want to hear from you. It helps them find whoever is doing this.
Thank you again, Councilmember Willis. And we're going to go to another polling question. Then we're going to jump to our next question coming to us from Paula. Next question for you folks is this. When you pay taxes on your home, about 30% of that money is used to pay for city services specifically. The rest of the money goes to other organizations like the school district, community college district, or county to pay for those services. Now, thinking about city services, what sentence do you agree with most? Press one if you agree most with, I prefer to lower taxes, even if it means cutting city services. Press two if you prefer to keep taxes and city services about the same as they are now. Press three if you prefer to raise taxes to allow the city to offer more services. So again, our question for you is, when you pay taxes on your home, about 30% of that money goes to be used for city services. The rest goes to money for other organizations like school district, community college district, or the county to pay for services. Now, thinking just about city services, what sentence do you agree with most? Press one for you prefer to lower taxes, even if it means cutting city services. Press two if you prefer to keep taxes and city services the same. Press three if you prefer to raise taxes to allow the city to offer more services. And let's get Paula's question in here live next. Paula, thank you for waiting. What's your question for us? Might have Paula on mute here. Let me go ahead and read her question. She's asking, "How much of the budget will be allocated to go towards more policemen? We need more policing." I don't know if Councilmember Willis, you want to start in on this? Again, it's from Paula. Jeanette?
I'll start off. Public safety accounts for 60% of our general fund budget. And so specifically, when we look at the police department, their total budget for the current year is 656 million. And city council is committed, the administration is committed to funding police officers. We are committed to funding 250 police officers each year. We are also committed to funding their meet and confer agreement to make sure that we continue to be competitive with our surrounding cities. And so there is a commitment to continue to fund public safety and continue to make that the highest priority for the city of Dallas.
All right. Thank you so much for taking that one on. Let's go to, I believe we have Otis here next. Bring up Otis's question. And I think this might be a good one for Ali in Public Works. Otis, you're live. Go ahead with your question, please.
Yes, I had a question concerning the sidewalks on, you know, your private property, your homes. Who's responsible? How do I submit a request to get the sidewalk repaired or replaced or whatever?
Great. So Otis's question is, how can I get my street repaired? Who do I call? Does the city replace the sidewalks when they get torn up? How does that work? And can we go to Ali for this one? Start out? Ali, we still got you there on WebEx?
If we've lost Ali, the best contact, again, we say it a lot, but we encourage you to dial 311. So for those of you that are in the city, you can dial 311 or you can dial 670-3111. Let's wait and see if Ali jumps on.
While we're waiting for Ali, we have an in-person audience question as well. All right. So what we can do is, can somebody bring her the mic after we finish answering this question? Just hand it right to her and we'll have her come in with her next question. Ali, do we still have you there?
Do you want me to start?
Go right ahead.
Okay.
So I'm here also, but yeah, sorry. I had a problem with unmuting, but I'm okay now.
Okay, we're hearing you now, Ali. Go ahead.
I just need to listen to the question again. Please.
Yeah, there might be something wrong with your microphone there, Ali. Let's go ahead and go to our in-person audience question here.
My main concern is climate change and the fact that we're behind in our CCAP plan. And it's my understanding, not only that, but we are, the city is going to be cutting three positions in that department. I'd like to know from somebody what three positions are being cut, why? And I don't consider the fact that they haven't been filled a reasonable reason. Climate change will affect everybody. It'll affect our police, who are out in the heat. Especially our asphalt roads will really deteriorate faster than they are.
Part of our annual budget development process includes amendments. And there was an amendment to eliminate positions that had not been filled for 12 to 14 months. And so the three positions that you're referring to are positions that were vacant at the time. And so I can tell you that council is committed to funding initiatives in our CCAP. I can also tell you that we are talking internally about how do we do a better job of marketing the work that we're doing to make sure that even with the three positions that were eliminated, we're still moving forward with the different initiatives throughout the different departments. Because the Office of Environmental Quality is not the only department that's part of our CCAP and it's doing work to implement that program.
And I would say that the discussion today is really to look forward at the 2024-25 budget. So if that move was made for last year, there, I mean, we're having this discussion so we can get input on this sort of thing. And for those who don't know, CCAP is the Comprehensive Environment and Climate Action Plan that was adopted by the city in March of 2020. Dallas is a leader in adopting this kind of plan. But we need to be more aggressive in hitting the milestones and evaluating each year. And actually, a new committee was formed around, an environmental commission was formed in order to make sure that these milestones were hit along the way. Now, there are categories where they may be behind. And so this is the sort of thing that this session is meant to gather information on. As Jeanette outlined, there are dates and times coming up for public hearings. Council members, you can always reach out to, to let them know and share what your thoughts are around this. So the intent of this is to hear things like this and say, as we look at the upcoming budget, which there's a whole lot of need, if you haven't gathered that already, where do we need to spend? What are the priorities? Could some of these duties be shared in other departments so that they are gotten to, maybe not under that budget line item, but in across some other departments? But the whole intent is to gather this sort of input so that as we shape the next year, this sort of feedback can be incorporated.
Good afternoon. Christina Puey here for District A on the Commission on Disabilities. The city of Dallas City Council approved in their budget to allocate funding for DART. And if I'm incorrect on the amount, please let me know. I believe it's $33 million. But of that amount, what amount, if any, is geared toward para-transit for individuals with disabilities?
I think what you're referencing is actually, DART had excess sales tax revenues last year. And so they worked with the city to give the city some of that money to manage projects for them that affect DART and our residents. So the money had to be spent on projects like sidewalks or, you know, various markings, et cetera, that would be of benefit to transit as well as, I mean, it had to have some sort of overlay of that nature. So that $33 million is actually from that sales tax excess revenue. And that is for ADA compliance. And I think it's mostly related to sidewalks. So it doesn't necessarily get into the transit mode. So the para-transit, I think, would fall more under DART's budget, of which Jeanette had noted, we all pay, when we pay sales tax, 8.25 cents of that, whatever we pay, is our sales tax rate. 6.25 cents goes to the state of Texas. One penny comes to your city. One penny goes to DART. And so I think that amounts to about $426 million a year that goes to DART. I'm sorry?
451.
She's the numbers lady, so listen to her. So out of that is where they would begin to get to that para-transit. Now, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct. Just wanted to make sure that you are aware that the 1% that goes to the city, so we budgeted $451 million for fiscal year '24. And so we would assume that if we collect 451, DART will collect 451. You're welcome.
Thank you so much for those questions from our audience in person here at Fair Park. We're going to go back to our phone audience from this next one from Kalen. Kalen, you're live. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, what are the strategic set aside for them or job opportunities?
Got it. So Kalen's looking for any career opportunities for upcoming artists in the city, career and job opportunities for upcoming artists in the city. Let's go to Jack Ireland. Can you take this one on? Thank you, Jack.
So I'll take this question. So within the city of Dallas budget, we have our Office of Arts and Culture. And one of the services that they provide, they allocate cultural services contracts to our nonprofit organizations and our artists. So they allocate and interact with over 50,000 artists across the city. The fiscal year '24 budget for that allocation is, if you want to leave your contact information, we will make sure that you are connected with them and part of, so you can receive the notifications for their call for artists.
I'd like to add that as we have 8,000 people listening, that April is Arts Month in Dallas. Actually, I think it's 12 months of the year. However, there is going to be a lot of attention on the arts in the month of April. And one thing that that staff that has been funded in arts and culture, the Office of Arts and Culture has been working on and is bringing back in April, is the Culture Pass. And this gives free admission to, right now, 40-plus different museums, performances, et cetera, all around our city. And I know that number is growing all of the time. And your ticket to getting that arts pass is having a library card. So visit your library, get a library card. And that is your pass for free admission to so many things that our amazing city offers. And that is one of the things that is offered. But by having a vibrant arts community and showing up and supporting them, it gives more artists opportunities and attention. So I would say this is how all the puzzle pieces fit together. But I would definitely want to invite everyone who doesn't have a library card to go and get one. And those who already have them, that is your ticket to some amazing performances, gallery shows, et cetera, over the next month and beyond. And it's not just for April. This will go on. This will, it's back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that was my fault, Jack. The next question's coming for you. Just wanted to get you primed. Appreciate you jumping up here. All right. Our next question's coming to you from Lyle in Turtle Creek. Let me go ahead and read his question, and we'll take that to Jack. He's asking, are the firefighters' pensions fully funded, and the general administrative workers? Or are we piling up debt that we can't see how to pay for? Have we spent the money that was authorized in the last two bonds? And is the city sending up any kind of rainy day fund or reserve? And again, that's from Lyle.
Thank you for the question. There were several questions in there, and I'll start with the pension question. The city operates two pension funds, one for our police and firefighters, and one for our non-uniform employees. And the mayor appointed an ad hoc committee back in the fall, specifically to address the funding of the two pension funds. And so we have been meeting since September of last year, meeting regularly, working to identify a new funding strategy, a new funding plan, to ensure the long-term soundness of both the Police and Fire Pension Fund, and the Employee Retirement Fund. It is a priority of the city, to the point that the mayor appointed eight members of council to serve on this ad hoc committee. Ms. Willis, would you like to address that, since you are a member of that committee?
I am a member of that committee, and there's definitely commitment and dedication to working on the pension funding soundness plan. That's what the legislature determined that should be done by 2025. And so that is what we are working toward. There's one thing that you said, I think it was a little bit of a misspeak, and it was that the city operates these funds. The city does not operate these funds. They are, they each have their own executive directors. They have their own board of directors. They manage their own investments. So while the city contributes 34% of police and fire salaries, and I think it's slightly lower on employees, city employees' salaries, in addition to what the employee contributes annually, which to this year, I think in police and fire, it was to the tune of $180 million, and I'm not sure what the employee. 70 million into the Employment Retirement Fund. So, but there's commitment to getting to the Funding Soundness Restoration Plan. There are a lot of options being looked at, but some of them are just coming out of the budget every single year. And so how we manage fulfilling that, along with providing the services that are expected, is, that's going to be a tough thing to answer every year, because as you've heard, many people are calling in about streets, and alleys, and the arts, and that sort of thing. So balancing that is going to be tricky. But, you know, it's unfortunate that the pensions got into this situation several years ago, by, you know, the actions of others who weren't really thinking in the interest of their membership. The legislature allowed us to retool how those boards are comprised, so that now there is a majority membership appointed by the city, so that it can be a little more balanced in the thinking. There are more guardrails that have been set up, so that this sort of thing doesn't happen again. But the city of Dallas is contributing your tax dollars, but we don't have a say in how they're managed. And so we are just working through all of these different points, as we get to a plan to get these to full funding.
Thank you. And I think the other two parts of the question were about the bond program and reserves. And so, Jeanette, do you want to take either of those?
Sure, I'll take the reserves question. I think that, I want to remind everyone that the city has done a really good job of being a good steward in establishing reserves. We went from a reserve of $153 million in fiscal year '16, which is about 49 days of reserve, to where we ended fiscal year '23, we're at $345 million in reserves. That's 73.3 days. And so I think the city is committed to making sure that we meet our financial policy, that requires a minimum of seven days, or a minimum of 50 days, and a maximum of 70 days. So there is a commitment and attention paid to the reserves, to make sure that we are good stewards of your financial resources.
And I think the third part of the question was regarding the bond programs. And the city is still in the process of implementing the 2017 bond program. And we do have a few partnership projects, even from prior bond programs to 2017. We are working, our Department of Public Works, our Department of Bond and Construction Management, are actively working to complete those bond programs. As you know, the city council has called an election, and there is an upcoming election for a '24 bond program. But we are definitely working to complete all the projects that are currently underway, and to deliver those projects to the residents.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking on that question. And Lyle, thanks for three great questions. Appreciate your participation today. We're going to run our last survey question. Then we're going to have a question coming to us, she prefers to say anonymous, so I won't be reading her name, but I'll be reading her question in a moment here. Our next survey for you is this. How many years have you lived in the city of Dallas? Press 1 for 0 to 5 years. Press 2 for 6 to 10 years. Press 3 for 11 to 20 years. And press 4 for 21-plus years. Again, how long have you lived in the city of Dallas? Press 1 for 0 to 5 years, 2 for 6 to 10 years, 3 for 11 to 20 years, and 4 for 21-plus years. And we are getting a lot of votes from people who've been here for 21-plus years. So really appreciate you all being on this forum for an hour with us as well. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and give a shout out to quite a few folks here who are asking questions about road conditions and street repairs. We don't have anybody from that department here to answer your questions today. So what we're going to do is, we're going to tag you for follow-up.
I'm here. This is, this is Ali from Public Works. I'm here, yes. Sorry, my WebEx froze on me, so I got disconnected for a second, but I'm back.
I see, I see. We've got kind of too many in the next seven minutes to take those on here. So what we're going to do is flag those folks for follow-up, and somebody will follow up with you and answer your question directly to you. So we've got your phone number, we've got your name, we've got your question. Anybody who asks questions about city rep, city, uh, street repairs and roads, you're going to get a call from that department. They're going to answer your question in the next week here, so expect a call. And thank you again for your question. Let's go on to this next question we've got coming to us, from an anonymous caller in Dallas, asking, when the city finishes street repairs, do they send someone to do quality control on the work? Sometimes the fix is done incorrectly, and not even worth the repair. And Ali, thank you for being back on with us. If you could take this one on from our anonymous caller?
Absolutely. So there are different types of repair and restoration of the streets. Some of them are being performed by city staff, some of them are by contractors for the city staff, and some of them are also by private entities, such as utility companies, or private developers, and all these things. The city has an inspection program for all the capital project, all the public projects that we do, we perform. So we inspect all of them. They have a warranty period. Before the warranty expires, we inspect them again, in case if there are any defects or anything like that. However, for, I guess, the restoration of the pavement by other entities, for example, the private sectors, or utility companies, there are some inspections. However, I'm not going to lie, we're not going to be able to inspect all of them, because just due to the fact that there are many of those projects in a year, and we have limited resources and staff that we can actually perform the inspection. But if we, because they pull a pyramid, and they pull the right of a pyramid, if you identify there's a pavement that is failing, and it has been restored recently, we're going to find out who has performed this repair, and we're going to follow up with the company, or with the entity, to make sure that they're going to come back and repair it again. Hope that answers the question.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Ali, hang there. We got another question from another anonymous caller, who's asking, what is the process for asking for speed checks for a neighborhood? I need one in mine. How can I get that done? What would you, your advice be to this caller?
I'll jump in and answer this one. The best way to have our Department of Transportation come out and do an assessment is to dial 311. So go ahead and submit a service request for 311. The Department of Transportation will provide an assessment of that area.
And I think if, possibly what they might have meant is, if you've got speeding, or stop sign running, or something like that, that would also be, make a 311 request, because you may be asking for patrol. So there are two ways to look at it. You know, one may be for an assessment, to see what kind of traffic calming can be added to your neighborhood. The other side is, you may be looking for enforcement, which, let me just make a plug for, everybody drive the speed limit. Be good drivers, be thoughtful with regard to pedestrians, et cetera. If we all did this, we wouldn't have to worry about the enforcement piece. However, we know that some are creating issues that can lead to traffic injuries and fatalities. That's not right. That's not lawful. And so if what you're looking for is a situation where you're just seeing it happen excessively, go on and call 311 and log that, so that it can go to the right department to get on some sort of rotation for enforcement.
All right. Thank you again. And we have come very close to the end of our forum. We've got about three minutes left. And I'm wondering if any of our speakers here in person, or who've joined us through WebEx, would like to offer any closing thoughts as we're preparing to wrap up our forum here. And if there's anybody else who has any in-person questions, raise your hand, flag me. No? We're good? All right. Any closing thoughts here from Jeanette? If we could start with you.
Sure. I just want to thank everyone for participating in our first City Hall at Fair Park event. We have a lot of city departments that have come out to showcase the services that they provide. And so I'm very happy and thankful for the people who have showed up in person. Also want to thank all of our callers on the line who have stayed on the call to share their feedback. As I mentioned at the beginning, resident feedback is important. We use the feedback that we receive from our residents to build the budget. So all of the comments and questions related to streets, we hear you. And so I would encourage everyone to continue to engage in the process with us. Take our budget survey. You can take it online, if you have access to our Dallas Public Library locations, or our Dallas Recreation Centers. We have surveys at those locations as well. But again, I just want to thank you all for coming out. I especially want to thank Councilmember Willis from District 13 for joining us today, and of course, staff that are here in person assisting with the questions.
We need to hear from you. It's great that so many people tuned in today. I want to thank the staff that's here on site, so many departments coming out on a Saturday. But this is the beginning of the process, and we don't vote on that budget until the end of September. And Jeanette had outlined some dates. I don't know if you want to recap those again, but go to dallas.gov, and look up your councilperson, if you haven't already, gotten in touch with them. Let them know what's on your mind, what you're thinking, what's a priority to you, because we genuinely welcome these comments to help what our staff is doing with Jack and Jeanette, and their team, and all the departments. They're creating these budgets right now. And hearing from the very people who are funding this is a very critical part of putting it all together. And so there are opportunities to plug in at public meetings, but if that's not your thing, or you can't make it to a public meeting, please let your councilperson know what's on your mind, because we want to hear from you.
And if I may, before we close as well, I just wanted to give a shout out to Councilmember Adam Bazdo, who is also online. And so he has been listening to the feedback that's been shared today. So he didn't have the opportunity to speak, but thank you, Councilmember, for being online and listening as well.
And then I'll just close with Councilmember Willis' comment about our next opportunity to engage with you all. So we do have a budget public hearing on May 22. That is at City Hall, but you do not need to drive to City Hall. You can actually register to be a speaker through our city secretary's office. And so I would encourage you to provide feedback. So our next upcoming budget public hearing is on May 22. Look forward to hearing from you all.
Thank you again. Appreciate each of you. And thank you to everybody who joined us today. A few of you had questions that we weren't able to answer today, but we have tagged for follow-up, Adrian, Wayne, Rosa, Cheryl, Tillman, and Linda. Now, anybody else who is on the phone, I see we do have quite a few other questions, and we've run out of our hour here. But you can stay on the line as we wrap up this call. Leave us a voicemail message if you have any additional thoughts or comments you'd like to submit as part of this proposed budget process. And if you need somebody from the city to call you, the city of Dallas telephone Town Hall meeting from Fair Park. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.